Welcome everyone to our city council meeting for Monday, March the 11th. If we could have a roll call please, man, to establish court.
Melissa Green.
Here.
Harry Meyer.
Here.
Mickey Schneider.
Here.
Susan Harmon.
Here.
Bob Thomas.
Here.
Terry McLuhan.
I'm here.
We have six.
Stand and pledge allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Give motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
All right. Have a couple of items we'll be postponing until our next meeting. That'd be number one, under the unfinished business, planning commission request to reduce the number of members. And then under new business, the item number one, the ordinance for the aggregate and sidewalks.
I think we have a mix up.
We do?
How about ordinance addressing animals in hot cars? Because they, planning decided to postpone this and this is...
Well, that's postponed. Number one's postponed. And then we're going to postpone number two also. Is that correct?
And number one under new business.
That's what I said.
So we agree?
And then also under number four, instead of resolution to waive bidding, it's an ordinance to waive bidding.
Okay, can you repeat what?
Yeah, start over.
All right. Item number one, planning commission request, under unfinished business. Item two, the ordinance to addressing the animals in hot cars. And under new business, item number one, ordinance for the aggregate and sidewalks. And then just a change in wording under new business, item number four, instead of a resolution, it is an ordinance to waive the bidding.
Do you need a motion to approve that?
Unless there's any other items? If not, give a motion to approve the...
Second.
I got Ms. McLuhan made a motion to approve the ordinance as amended. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. Again, a motion to approve the minutes for February 25th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 25th, 2019.
Second.
Any additions, corrections, changes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes that submitted, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
Okay. Susan abstains. And under our commission committees, we have planning, we've got a couple vacancies in the planning, also have one in the CAPC. And tonight, we're going to be voting on the hospital for Peggy Duncan.
Motion to approve Peggy Duncan for hospital wards.
I'll second that.
Okay, that's position two for Peggy Duncan. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Recuse.
Did you?
Recuse.
Recuse, okay. And then that brings us down to our building inspector. She's got her little report for us.
Of course, y'all know me, I'm Bobby Ray. I just got some figures for you, I'm going to start doing these on a quarterly basis. I did make a, kind of a little mess up on last, the last meeting, I had sent you all some information as far as enforcement. Those reports really aren't supposed to go out because they have names and addresses attached to them. That essentially is FOIA available, or y'all can come to my office and see it, but as far as, we can't have that, that's not supposed to go out to the public. So, I redid those, it will come out as, and broken down into what violations and how And that being said, I'm going to go ahead, go ahead with our construction category, our permits, that we've done since January 1st, and they're broken down into each category. It's written on y'all's, the tree removal down there, for some reason, it didn't get that on there, so I went ahead and just wrote it on there, so y'all would know. To date, and I'm not going to read these off individually, to date, we have a total of 59 permits since January 1, as of to, into today's date. We also have, which I finally was able to get this to start printing out, here on number three, it's labeled in the top right corner, is actually, it doesn't show up on permits, but these are actually permits for certificate of occupancy inspections. And I had to redact some of that out. As of this date from January 1, we're at 19. And then number, skipping around here, I'm sorry. Number two, with your packet, is essentially what I was telling to begin with about the enforcement totals by category, with the minimum maintenance. There was a, for some reason, it showed operating without a city license and operating without a business license, it split those up, but it's actually the same type deal. And then prohibited signs eight, retaining wall two, and unsanitary conditions four. I know at the previous council, someone had asked about timelines, as far as how long they're given. That goes, depends on the violation. If it's a major, major, major violation, of course, they would have more time than, than a simple, you know, a simple fix. The new program that I have set up over there now, like I said, if you would like to come in, you can actually view the timeline that they are given per violation. The one thing I was wanting to, to kind of show too, is, in my program, it's split up between verbal warning, written warning, under investigation, resolved, they had a time limit, or it's referred to the city attorney. That will all be in there. It will not so, show that with the report that I give you all at this point, but these others will. The majority, I can tell you, the majority of these, in that, in the enforcement part, and I know some people don't believe in verbal warnings, but the majority of these were taken care of just by me going by there and telling them. We have a few issues with some unsanitary conditions, that these guys have prolonged. Two that I know of, one of them was partially done, not totally completed. She's, I think she's got like two weeks left on hers, to finish the deal. I have another one that his, that 30 days is almost up, and I haven't noticed anything being done. He has noticed a vacate premise, if it's not done by that date. As far as citations, about the, I don't know what we could do on that, as far as giving him a citation. It is his structure, it was approved for a, like a small shop, he just cannot live there. I did, had spoke before with the health department in Berryville, they essentially did the same thing I did, they gave him 30 days. When, if he's not got that done, like I said, he will have to vacate, and I will be discussing that with the city attorney about what he thinks we can do. If he does, we can't keep him off the property, it's his property. He can go down there, he can work in his shop, he can do whatever, he just can't live there. Okay? Is there any other questions, or anything that y'all have?
I have a couple of questions. When you said your, your system, is it a software that you have now?
It's the, it's the BSA, and I had to, which is the system that the city has gone to. It does payroll, it does permits, it does a lot of things. It attracts vacation time, all that stuff. I had to tweak it. It has a deal under enforcement, and has a deal under violations. Violations would not take anything, I had to move everything and start doing it actually just under enforcement, and that's how I was able to add verbal warning, written warning, citation issued, under investigation, repairs pending, and stuff like that.
Okay, so if somebody were to go in, if a city council member wanted to go in and view something, because it's the entire system, it would have to be with someone there? Because otherwise, you could probably get into some other areas if you were left alone with computers?
Most of those are read only, there are certain computers, like I have on mine, because I have to send a report to finance, but I don't go in there and look anything. Everything pretty much is read only. It's the same thing, when we set this up, and Mayor, I don't know if they had ever fixed yours, he could, the intent when we had this in there was he could go into the building department, and he could pull stuff up and see it, but it was read only. He couldn't change any information, or anything like that.
Okay.
And it's the same thing with mine. I mean, the only reason why I can do the accounting one, is because I have to have it open to where I can send the finance department my monthly state surcharge fee on commercial.
Okay. So then my other question is, on these particular items, or on these particular issues that you have in there, do you also have a category where it was citizen reported, or it was enforcement noted?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
It has origin, and it has, it actually says filer. So if someone calls me now, even if they want to remain anonymous, it may give me their phone number, they may not say who they're at, who they are, but our phone system shows caller ID. So whenever I put origin, I put the phone number, what the complaint was, and then it takes over from me, that I went to there on this date, I spoke with them, they have such and such, or they received a verbal warning, or a written warning.
Okay, so you found, so all of that is not online then?
Yes.
Ms. McLuhan?
So things like, there are like vehicles, and that, that's not on any of these?
It will, actually, all of that will fall under, I'm adding, the minimum maintenance that's in here right now, and unsanitary conditions, that is all kind of broken, taken from the clean city ordinance, which also does the abandoned vehicles. That, I'm probably, I'm going to add that to the system, instead of just doing a blanket deal of, of the clean city ordinance, ordinance number...
Break it down.
And all that, I want to break it down into individuals, that way we know, because once they get the written warning, and if they do it, it'll show habitual on this.
There are some of those out now, I guess.
I have some out right now, yes. And I actually have, I will tell you that a couple of these entries on here, were actually two violations by the same property owner, that's on here. And like I said, I could show you that in my system, but with FOIA stuff, I just don't want the names and everything released here.
Mary?
Yes.
How do you determine an abandoned vehicle?
Clean city ordinance actually makes it a little more questionable, in some aspects. I know through the police department, essentially, if it was abandoned, it had to have more, it had to have at least two flats, be unoperable, or inoperable. Busted out windows, expired registration. The clean city ordinance does say that. Say, expired registration, more than one flat, grass growing up tall underneath it, not in its operable use.
So any one of those?
Yes. Yes.
And it doesn't matter whether it's in their yard or in the street?
Well, actually, it's easier if it's in public right of way. Because if it's in public right of way, it actually falls with me and the police department. And we can issue a, what we call a red tag, for, it has to be removed within 72 hours. Where we start to get into, the gray area, is you have one parked on private property. I've not had any issues so far, with some of them that I've spoke with, it just says that they essentially have to be out of view. But we, we have some that, I don't know how to really put this, it's going to be tough. I know these people are going to fight tooth and nail, because they're going to say, it's on private property, how can you say that it's not running, if it's got retired registration, you know? All we can do is, is write them a written warning, or write them a citation, and go from there. Let them fight it out in court. Yes, Mr. Green?
Are parts of the clean city ordinance, are they unenforceable, and we need to work on some of that?
I don't think they're necessarily unenforceable, it's just that gray, like I said, the gray area. I mean, when you start dealing with people's private property, I understand, you know, with the historic district and, and stuff like that, them keeping their homes up, minimum maintenance, stuff like that, that's a little bit different. But when you start talking about vehicles, they may run fine. I've had two instances where I had complaints on them, there was, they looked awful, people got in them, fired them up, the only thing was, and they even had current registration on them. But they were sitting, one of them was sitting outside, public right of way, in a yard, the other one was sitting in public right of way. I essentially told them they had to be moved, I was going to red tag the other vehicle, and she literally fired it up and drove it away, while I was sitting there.
Now, are boats and motorhomes allowed in the, on private property?
By code, they're supposed to be all in a carport, or something like that, essentially not seen. They can be, if they're not being used, they can be, but if they're sitting out there with a sewer line run over, and water line hung over, run over, and electrical, then that's a completely different issue.
Okay.
Then that, to me, falls under, they need to be in a, in a RV park.
Okay. So if they're untagged, and like a boat, are they allowed?
It, it talks about boats, and they have to have a current registration, and just like the other, not a bunch of grass growing up underneath them, visible from any main right of way, or main road.
And as do motorhomes, have to have a current license on them?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Mr. Thomas?
Two questions. One, you just said visible from a main road?
Well, it talks about visible from the roadway.
Oh.
And so, typically, even if it is a platted street, if it's not maintained, it's not considered a roadway. If it's a city maintained street, and every, or city maintained alley, then I consider that a roadway.
Okay. But, but main was the word that confused me, when you said a main road.
Yes.
Okay. The other question was, you had the list of, a whole long, lengthy list of sidewalks in need of repair, that you were trying to attach owner names to?
I have been trying to get those. I will tell you, that was, I'm glad you brought that up, that was another thing I was going to inform y'all. I'm going to start sending out approximately six letters a month. I'm going to try to split it up, I'm going to try to split it, do three or four of each, it might be eight a month, as far as letters going out, I'm going to try to split it up between residential and commercial.
When you say letter, about sidewalks, what do you mean exactly?
Excuse me?
When you say letter, what do you mean?
Essentially, in our code, they have to be sent or served with a notice of repair for the sidewalk.
Okay. Are you telling, in chapter nine of the code, or whatever?
It was, I think it's, is it nine or seven?
I think it's nine, and I think it says, once they're identified, they have to be divided.
No, if they have, they have to get with planning and zoning and all that, that's when, the city used to take, care of the base, the property owner was responsible for the sidewalk.
Right.
In 2010, 2009, that was changed where it's all the property owner's responsibility.
Right.
And I know they had tweaked that and changed that.
I think they still have, you know, they have 180 days, blah, 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 but I think...
Yeah, and if it's not done within the 180 days, then yes, they would get a citation.
I'm going to look at that, I think the, I think it's identify and cite, and then the 180 days.
Well, they have to be informed by the letter first.
Yeah.
Yes.
Bobby, are they allowed to take up historic sidewalks, take carton away? Are they allowed to do that?
I'll never find it.
We, when we were talking about changing that sidewalk ordinance, they were talking about stockpiling, the, some of the other in, at public works. It's their sidewalk, I think they can do with it what they want. I mean, as far as if they want to use the limestone and something else in their property, or if they want to haul it to somewhere, I think they can do that. Anyone else?
Mr. Thomas, are you still?
I've got it marked at home, I don't have it marked in hers. I'll have to get with Bobby next week.
Yeah, just get with me.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Eric?
As an example, there's a house on Council Street, it has a tarp hanging in front of it, black tarp, and...
There's nothing in HTC guidelines says there can't be a...
It's a plywood screwed over the windows now.
Mm-hmm. That, that would, could be something with HTC, but we have fought with this on several different occasions. HTC does not have any guidelines pertaining to tarps, or putting them up in front of your porch, or anything like that.
Wouldn't that come under unsanitary conditions? Because vermin and everything could be...
Depends. I mean, unsanitary conditions is a wide range of things. I mean, in the deal, it talks about vermin and mosquitoes, and stuff like that. There's homes that people are living in right now, that you have field mice, and rodents, and everything else, and, I mean, like I said, I don't think you could cite someone for having a tarp up, over there.
Like a home would be different to me, somebody putting something up would not be how they would have to live, unless they were homeless, you know?
Right.
You could see that.
Right.
So, wouldn't that still kind of come under the clean city ordinance?
Uh, tarp, no. I mean, here's the thing, is if the tarps, if it's hanging way down, and it's full of water on the end of it, or something like that, yes, that could be considered unsightly or unsanitary.
Okay. And that tarp is not doing that?
Not to my knowledge, it hasn't.
Okay.
I mean, and like I said, I've spoken with one numerous times, we had that issue with the New Delhi, we've had that issue on some other places, and they essentially don't have, the only thing that you would have to abide by, and that's essentially for commercial, was with the commercial, they couldn't, they had to be of, meet a specific guideline through the fire department, and they couldn't have any flame bowls within five feet, and everything else.
So if we could, could we put something like that into clean city? Get tarps awful?
I mean, you guys can do what you want, I mean, I don't, I just don't...
Is it enforceable if we do?
If it's temporary, I don't see how you could.
What would you consider temporary, a month?
It depends on the season. I mean, I mean, we had one, and I'm sure you all remember, down on North Main, that had those old, excuse my expression, crappy bamboo things hanging out front.
Yeah.
But there isn't anything we can do about it, because there was nothing in HTC guidelines about it.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Anyone else?
I did find the notice, we're basically using different words for the same thing. There is no citation for sidewalks, the notice is, the notice.
That's their notification.
That starts the timeline.
Yes.
And you go, you can end up directly in court after...
Right.
That notice.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Cal.
Thank you all.
All right, that leads us to your public comments.
Hi, Damon Hinky here tonight. Tonight, I represent the Chamber of Commerce, and happy to be able to give you some public comments. Mainly, I want to announce that we're pretty active this year with a lot of networking events, and also some educational events. If you know anything about Instagram, then you may not need to come in the morning, but if you don't know a lot about Instagram, then be at the community center at 8:00 a.m., we'll have some social time from 8:00 to 8:30, and then we'll have a presentation from Leisure List in northwest Arkansas, and they will talk about the best way to use Instagram to promote your business, and promote tourism in general. And Leisure List has a, it's one of the largest online apps and email services to tell you what's going on in northwest Arkansas. But really, more importantly than just that, that's called Morning Brew, by the way, with the Chamber. We do that the second Tuesday of every month at 8:00 a.m. at the community center. But more importantly, I want to talk about our season kickoff, it's called the Tourism Trade Show, and Season Kickoff, mark your calendar for April 23rd, that will be at the Inn of the Ozarks Convention Center. And the whole idea behind this trade show is to basically get every attraction in the geographic area that the outside world is going to be looking at, and asking them to come present at a table, and provide the top five reasons, or the top five things you want to be known for as an attraction. And what I need your help with is telling people, send your frontline, if it's a lodging, send the front desk person, if it's a restaurant, send your service personnel, if it's just a citizen that talks to a lot of people, send Fergie down there, we'll educate him. So, basically, you'll go around the room, and we want to have, you know, up to 30, 40 vendors at this thing, meaning attractions, so that people can really educate themselves. And then you'll, afterwards, we'll take all these top fives from all the attractions, make one big book, so that if they hire a new server, or if we have a new front desk person, they can say, here, here's, here's what you need to tell the tourists about each, each individual attraction. Wrapping it up here, the, we'll have a kickoff presentation, it will be myself, we'll go over to Justin, whatever they're doing at the CAPC, they'll tell us about how they're advertising for the season. I'm trying, there'll be Scott Shrain from Oz Trails to tell us how our trails connect up with the rest of the Oz Trails, so that we're all saying the same thing to the tourists at the same time. And then finally, I'm after Jim Daly, to try and get him in here, to give us a big kickoff from the state. But there'll be some type of state representation that says, this is what the state of Arkansas sees in 2019, and try to build everybody up on the same page, as a big pep rally to kick off the season. This kind of replaces what the old banquet was, where we just summed everything up and handed off in a ward, and went to bed. This is a get up and add 'em, here we go type situation, so. Thanks for listening, and I will be here next month to tell you more about what the Chamber of Commerce has got going on. See ya.
Thanks, Damon.
Thank you.
Before you start, I have some questions. By virtue of being a member of the Tree City USA...
You've got to say who you are, and all this...
My name is Chris Fisher, could I ask you all a question? By virtue of being a Tree City USA committee member, could I have a little more time than just three minutes in, in public speaking, to talk about something?
It's fine with me.
It's up to the council.
Five minutes.
I think you should get it.
Yeah.
Any objections?
No objections.
All right.
I know how to reset.
My name is Chris Fisher, I've been serving unofficially with Glenna Booth and the Tree City Committee since 19, I'm sorry, since 2007 or so, so it's been a good while. Tree City USA celebrates its 38th year in the city of Eureka Springs, started in 1981. The reason I wanted to come to present to you guys tonight is because we've had a Arkansas Forestry Commission Urban and Community Forestry Grant since, I think, August or so. Those grants trickled down to next to nothing for a few years, and they've started to receive funding from the Park Service, to extend those resources to communities in Arkansas. I think there are five or six that received the funding this year. Under our grant, we chose to create a few goals, one of which is called drafting the Urban Forestry Management Plan, which has been drafted once before, but didn't get much traction to Planning Commission and other groups. Another feature of the grant is trying to develop what's called the Eureka Springs Linear Arboretum, which is a database of the locations of particular specimens, which we determined to be contributory to the city's urban forest. There are three community design projects underway with the high school, the community center, and the Parks Commission, to plant 30 trees... center, and the Parks Commission to plant 30 trees, 10 at each site, working with folks to engage them with the process of designing projects that involve trees. With that grant, we've created the Wednesday Walks series with Parks Assistance, where we are walking about through town, trying to stick to the right-of-ways, the trails, the stairways, the alleyways, the public right-of-ways, to take in the species and specimens of the urban forest and notice the conditions in which they're growing. So, I'm including people on my journeys to do that as I gather data for the linear arboretum. An outcome of the linear arboretum might be that we could develop a Eureka Springs Heritage Tree Program where we give a definition to particular trees of a particular character. And the thing that I wanted to share tonight with you relative to all of that is the fact that I do believe the Urban Forestry Management Plan needs to make some progress while we have this opportunity. For one, it will try to take a look at land use in Eureka Springs and determine to what extent we have a developed or non-developed footprint. We'll look at satellite and mapping resources to determine pervious and impervious, impervious surfaces. We did this before with the East Program at the high school and determined that Eureka, back then, I think it was eight years ago or so, was about 75% impervious or undeveloped. And when you take those figures into account with a healthy watershed, your objective in that situation is to retain as much impervious surface as you can. So, there's a lot going on in an Urban Forestry Management Plan, and part of that has to do with coming here tonight to determine that some of the trees within the city's urban forest are public and some of those trees are private. And if we have 4,400 acres of city land, we have about 2,200 or so in public space between parks, cemetery, hospital, the school district. And so, you need to try to figure out how many trees are you actually dealing with and who owns those trees, but more importantly, how do we take care of those trees? And I don't want to go on too long tonight because I wasn't really prepared to present a formal presentation, but if climate change is a growing consideration, our forest is going to play a huge role in the quality of our lives, for the quality of lives of many people who will live here in the future. And I think the question that I'd like to pose as a conversation as this plan moves forward is, what role does the city see itself playing as a Tree City USA committee, the oldest in the state? If we celebrate the 40th anniversary in two years of that organization, what sort of expectations do we have of what we will do for our forest? And it's a complicated question, but I'd like you all to start thinking about that. I'm going to reach out to some of you and get your opinions about what we can do specifically. I've spoken to the Planning Commission about their tree ordinance, and they've asked for my input and assistance on that. There's a lot of stuff that we can do, so I'll be back to give you a brief update in the future. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Chris.
And let me talk about that.
Thanks, Chris. Is that it? Okay. That concludes the public comments. So, our next item under unfinished business is the ordinance 2275.
Second.
Okay. Ms. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2275 by title.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Thomas?
I understand that Planning Commission has had one resignation and one pending resignation, which is going to reduce their membership to five again. Pardon?
Number three.
Is that not? Planning Commission membership?
Nope.
Mine's numbered wrong then. Planning Commission membership.
Oh, okay. Now, this is canceling the one that we had.
The what?
This is canceling the one that we had because it wouldn't be fair for a person to vote twice.
Well, I'm getting to that.
Right.
Oh, okay. I don't know. They stopped you. I didn't. Oh, okay. So, the Planning Commission membership is technically down to odd now. We've had one resignation and one pending. So, I'm, I'm thinking that we need to not, I'm not going to vote for this. I think we need to keep the capability of putting a planning, a city council person on there if their membership drops again below five.
Ms. Snyder?
Unless we invoke a one-vote-only, not only will I be against it, but the majority of the residents will be against it because it's totally unfair.
Mr. Thomas, uh, Ms. Green?
Oh, uh, I kind of agree with Bob because at times, if we don't have a quorum at, at planning, if, if someone wanted a variance or CUP, then we don't have a quorum. Now, I know we're, we're discussing having, taking it down to five members, and that's something I'm just not happy with. I'm not campaigning to be back on planning. I don't think anybody sitting here is. But if we need to have somebody go onto planning, and I don't think it's a bad idea either because it, it gives us a liaison between planning and the city. And to me, Planning Commission is our most important commission. And so, I would hate that it ever comes to, and I've been around when we've not had quorums and the city couldn't do business for over three months. So, I'm kind of like Bob. I, I would like to keep this on the books. I've never heard one residence in all my years ever say anything about it.
Ms. McClung?
We can go ahead and pass on the second reading, and we still got the third, and it's immediate. Postpone it if you need to.
It's a second or a third reading? Second reading? Ms. Snyder?
Um, I'll go along with the second reading, but you've been on planning so much that the residents tend to not talk to the commissioners, because I have been in the two-seat position with the thought that it was one-vote-only. They feel free to talk to me, but our residents are upset enough about various things that have come down the pike because there's so many people in the one business group. They are really, really unhappy about the thought of a two-vote person. If somebody doesn't like one of them, they can vote twice to turn them down. That's not fair. If somebody does like someone, they can vote twice to do it against the better wishes of the majority of other people. I just don't think we need to put ourselves in that position, especially since we started this because of a lack of quorum, and that seems to be a thing that happens with planning in a systematic cycle, and then it fixes itself for a while, and then it drops again, and then it builds again. This has been going on for eons.
Mr. Thomas, did you have a-
I believe Ms. Harmon hasn't spoken yet.
Ms. Harmon, Susan?
I've been on planning, and, and I think the majority of those individuals that are on planning will do what is right for the city. I do not believe, and this is just my personal opinion, I believe you are there on planning, you're put on planning to vote in the best interest of the town. I believe you're voted on city council to vote in that same manner, and so therefore, you know, the argument of being able to vote or being, you know, associated with a particular business or order, that, that should never come into play with a Planning Commissioner or a city council member. So, if it does, then I would think that the Planning Commission and/or city council would be able to address that at that time. So, to just say that, that's automatically going to happen, I think is unfair.
I didn't say that.
I'm, I'm just telling you what my opinion is, and, and I think it's wrong to, to, to put planning in that light at this time. I also think that it is probably not real fair to say that the majority or a lot of our citizens are complaining about issues or things that are put in front of planning. I think that's unfair unless you've got some documentation. So, I would just caution from, from just stating a blank, you know, making a, a blank statement like that. That's what I have to say on that.
Mr. Thomas?
Just as an example, a couple of weeks ago, the city council voted to fund, fund remodeling of the auditorium. We then asked for funds from the CAPC, and our city councilperson, who is on CAPC, voted against CAPC giving contributing funds. So, it's very possible to, to sit on a committee and view issues from that perspective and then come to city council meeting and view it from, from the city council perspective. That's very possible, and it's easy to do, and if you have personal integrity, that is what you will do.
Both ways are possible.
Ms. Green?
A lot of what Susan said is correct. What I remember, and maybe Tim can answer me this question, when, like Mickey, you went back and sat on planning, if you voted on something in planning that had an, that went to city council, if I remember right, you recused yourself-
Yeah.
Or an ethical person would recuse, or, I mean, I feel people elected me because of my integrity and that I would do the right thing. And what Bob brought up about Susan is she voted one way because she saw it as best for the city, and she voted another way because she saw it best as for the tax collectors. And I thought that was an incredibly ethical thing to do. She looked at both sides.
Ms. Snyder?
I'm not saying it has happened, it will happen, it's going to happen. I'm saying after 45 years in this town, I have seen this happen, and I know it's happened in other areas, but people are unhappy. I have had a zillion phone calls. I don't get documents. I get phone calls, or visiting me down on the street, and when I come into shop, whatever. Point being, Eureka has found out the hard way too many times. If we don't plan for the future and for possible people who aren't quite as ethical as we are, if we don't plan for that, we get nailed.
Ms. Snyder?
I'm actually disappointed that, that Bob would bring the auditorium improvements up because I did have a reason why I did vote the way I did. As you know, because you've sat on the CAPC, that there are extreme expenses associated with the auditorium for the CAPC via their management of this particular building. And in years past, sitting on the CAPC, I've been able to see those expenses, as you have as well, Bob, when you were sitting on it. And it's not to, you know, pit one council member against the other. My feeling on that was that, just to clarify, so people understand why I voted the way I did, was that in the past, finances may not have been as great with, with the city, and they may not have been able to maybe come up with that $23,000. But as it stands right now, and because of this council, because you've been on it, there has been an opportunity over the last year for the city to have additional funds available to them, meaning they have not spent every single dime they've had, and therefore, the city does own the building. And I felt because of what I knew about the finances, that the city would be able to come up with the additional cash for that particular issue. So, again, I'm not trying to argue, and I think it's, you know, I'm not trying to throw you under the bus or anything like that, Bob. I just wanted to clarify why I did what I did since it was brought up.
Now, let's, let's keep to the subject, please. Now, let's, let's keep to the subject. You started it, you started, she responded. Let's keep to the deal with the Planning Commission.
I was complimenting her. She misunderstood me.
That's okay. Well, that's fine.
No, it's not fine.
If you just told her you were complimenting her, I think that's fine.
Over your, your-
Okay. If that's all right, Bob, I'm, yes, sir.
Okay. I'd like to, to continue the discussion of objectivity.
Okay. Please.
I was complimenting Ms. Harmon's objectivity, and I was speaking to Ms. Snyder's concern that it cannot happen. It can happen. And that's all.
All right. Ms. Green? But, Ms. McClung?
I think all of the discussions, it's, it gives a pretty good indication. We need to clarify.
God, no. No.
All right. Any further discussion? Mr. Thomas?
If this is, if we're thinking this might be bad on the third vote, it's bad on the second vote. There's no reason to pass it tonight and then vote against it on the third reading.
It's not bad.
We got a motion to discuss. We don't have a motion to, to read it for the second or for the third reading.
Yeah, I thought we did, Terry, right?
Yes, we do.
We got a second? Okay. All right, so we do have a motion, and it's, who seconded?
I did.
All right. So, we got a motion and a second to read this, to suspend the rule and place this ordinance 2275 on a second reading?
Correct.
All right.
Ms. Green?
No.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Four-two. Ordinance number 2275 and ordinance revoking ordinance 2179, 79, and ordinance amending Eureka Springs Municipal Code subsection 130402A regarding Planning Commission membership.
Ms. McClung?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion and we approve ordinance number 2275 on a second reading.
Second.
And, Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Okay. Again, motion and a second to, to approve this on a second reading?
Please.
All of them in favor, sing five a sang aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Four-two.
Okay. That brings us to our next item, which is ordinance number 2275 revoking ordinance. Twenty-one, we just, no, no, right, I'm sorry. Ordinance number 2276 to vacate the alley at Midway Alley. Ms. McClung?
Second.
All right. Ms. McClung?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion and we suspend rules and re-2275 by title.
Any discussion?
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. McClung?
Please hold on a moment.
Yep.
Ordinance number 2276, and ordinance vacating the portion of Midway Alley and returning the portion thereof to the adjoining landowners.
Ms. McClung? Any discussion?
Ms. McClung? Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Six-zero.
All right. That brings us down to new business with, uh, Mr. Weaver to discuss on ex parte. Get a motion to, Mr. Weaver?
Motion to discuss, second.
Mr. Weaver? Floor is yours, sir.
Based on speaking with one of the bill sponsors, Mr. Thomas, I think what is really being asked here is not for me to speak on ex parte, and if I'm wrong, I want the council to tell me, but ex parte is communication to an authority without giving the opposite side a voice, and it's typically where a judge speaks with one attorney and not the other side's attorney. I think what is really being asked here- I think what is really being asked here, and please, as I said, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's conversations that might be had between voting members of a commission, either being that voting members of the council or voting members of one of our commissions, about a vote that is going to take place before, that takes place outside the hearing of the general public and therefore potentially a violation of FOIA. Is that what you're expecting or is, do I need to talk about judges and...
So, but what you're FOIA-ing is not ex parte communication. Communication between two people on council is not ex parte?
It's not called ex parte, no. It would be a violation of the FOIA law or open meeting rule, particularly the open meeting rule. If they are speaking about anything which their vote may be required at a later date about. And that is something that makes it difficult for members of the same commission or council to talk about a lot of things because you don't know for certain what might lead to the development of something you'll have to vote on. If somebody comes to one of you and complains about a particular situation in town and they talk to another one about the same situation and the two of you then meet up at Harps and you're talking about that particular situation and over even Green Forest in Harps over there, you would be in violation if later you tried to pass a bill or a ordinance or resolution at this table because you'd had a conversation about your beliefs that you're now voting on here. So, what you need to be very careful about, and any of our commissioners, this doesn't just apply to this council, it applies to each of our commissions. Anytime the two commissioners, two council members, two members of the same body get together, if they're going to discuss things, the weather is probably a safe topic in most instances, but if you're gonna have to vote on potentially how much salt we're gonna buy because of next winter to put on the roads or beet juice or whatever we're gonna use, and that's a potential vote you may have, although that's probably a stretch because I think the mayor makes, or the public works makes that choice a lot of times, but you're gonna approve the amount of money to be expended potentially, you may be violating the open meeting rule because the press has the right and the general public has the right to know what you're discussing before you vote. And anything that you use in that discussion to influence one another, even if you're not intentionally trying to influence one another, could be then a violation because the press and the general public aren't present. They haven't been notified, they haven't been brought into the discussion, so they're limited from knowing what went into fully making that discussion. They're supposed to be present. And Arkansas has very strong open meeting law, very strong FOIA law to allow the general public and the press to know what's going on in their government. We have some of the most open laws in the country. And there's a move about every time the legislature meets to try to adjust those because it makes things very complicated sometimes when you need to discuss things. It would be best maybe, in a lot of instances, discussed outside of general knowledge. Several years ago, there was a move in Fort Smith to vote to make a purchase of a piece of real estate. And how much was the city gonna bid at a particular auction? Those couldn't be held in private. There couldn't be any discussion of, well, I think it's worth a million dollars, I think it's worth a million and a half. So, their bid was basically an open knowledge. If they wanted to go in and actually bid, everyone would know, well, the city will bid it to a million and all we gotta do is go a dollar above and we can take it away from And when I was at the municipal league this last time, there was some discussion that maybe we're going to drift a little closer in the way we do things to this next legislative session, to what the federal rules are, and they're a little more allowing some discussion of, as long as votes aren't being taken. But I don't see even anything indication in what I've seen from the legislature so far in the session that's doing that. So, I think we're gonna be stuck with what you mean, make sure you're not discussing things that may have a vote. And it's, as I said, it's really hard to know exactly what is going to come in front of the council or in front of the commission, be it not this commission, not this body, but one of the other city boards in the future. Because so many things touch on other things. Now, the restrictions don't necessarily apply to if a council member wants to talk to the mayor or a council member wants to talk to the city clerk or myself, because the three of us don't generally have a vote. But anytime two council members or three council members or five council members want to get together and talk, or they running into each other at the store or in a party or whatever, they need to be very careful what is said between them that they not violate. The last violation that I know of in Eureka happened, that actually was prosecuted, happened some 35, 40 years ago. So, it's not a common thing to happen, but my understanding at that time, and I've not went back and read all the court case because it mostly is not available anymore, but my understanding is they removed a council member at that time for having conversations. And so, it does happen and it is a misdemeanor crime if convicted. I don't believe in that instance that they went through the criminal proceeding, I think they only went through a civil proceeding and removed the council member, but they may have also done a criminal proceeding and it can result in a fine. And it can result in the potential of being removed from the board, whatever, whether it be a council member or whether it be a commissioner on the cemetery commission or whatever it might be. So, being extremely circumspect in what you say to other members of the same board you sat on or boards, if we continue to allow planning commissioners to be appointed from here or we continue with CAPC members, if something is in any way, shape or form might come up as a vote, it's probably not a fair topic between two members of that board.
Ms. Schneider?
Okay, so if this is a violation, let's say Terry and I happened to meet up and we have a discussion on beet juice versus salt. And I'm for beet juice and he's for salt, and we try to convince each other of the pros and cons. And all of a sudden, we have a really bad snowstorm and this comes before council about we're gonna have to do something. Could we just recuse or pretend the conversation never happened or, because two of us would know that we had at that point had no legal conversation? Sorry, Terry, here's the only one I can think of that would like salt.
I contest. I should, if I could, say.
But I mean, but really, could we just recuse and say, well, we accidentally discussed this?
You could potentially recuse, but it's better not to have had the conversation.
Well, you know, it's one of those things. Who's gonna think that we're gonna come before council with beets versus salt in Eureka? But you see my point. I mean, it happens.
Ms. McClung?
Uh, I guess the way to do it is have your people get with my people. Only problem is I don't have any people, believe me, love.
I think all mine moved away.
Ms. Green?
So, Tim, if you kinda unwittingly met with another councilperson and we're talking about something and a month later it came up, kinda like they're talking, but you didn't have, had no idea this subject would ever come up, have you committed ex parte or would it be just better to say, hey, you know, Harry and I talked about that a month ago. I had no idea that it would be on our table. I will recuse myself. Would that be the best form?
I don't know that a public confession is necessary, but recusing oneself and you're not required in Arkansas to state why you recuse.
Okay.
Would probably be the most appropriate thing that you could do. But there's no clear remedy if you have been talking out of school when you're not supposed to, of what's supposed to happen to you, except there are the penalties in court of civil removal or criminal punishment.
Where we were at the municipal league, I was surprised because I had thought that if two of us gave the press two hours notice and we were going to meet at Bruce to talk about X subject, that it was fine, that that was within the law. But we were, I was corrected at the municipal meeting that no, city council people cannot do that. The only time we can sit and discuss any city business is at this table.
I didn't know that either.
Ms. McClung?
He gave you, gave us all the best advice and then talked about whether it was, whatever it is, let's move forward.
Ms. Thomas?
Before, since planning commission decisions always can be appealed or, and some of the action they prefer, want to take always comes before city council, the rule would be just as, you know, you say on council or on commission, but actually council communicating with commission members is also under that law, isn't it?
It would be problematic, especially if we continue and do not revoke where a council member sets those places. If that person was involved in the discussion at either level, they would have a vote. As far as a council member who does not set on the planning commissioner and a planning commissioner who does not have a vote on the, talking, the rule doesn't specifically, I don't think, forbid that. Because as a general citizen, a planning commissioner has the right to talk to their council member. The council member has the superior vote of the two and can or will turn, but they have the right to listen to the members of the citizenry. But if it was a member that sets on both boards, one, that was in the conversation on one side or the other, I think that would definitely violate the rule.
Thank you.
Ms. Green?
If a commissioner called me and asked me to explain one of the codes or laws, is that ex parte, explaining it to them or explaining how I interpreted it?
I think you can explain it to them just as you could explain it to John Smith if he calls you from down the street and says, I'm thinking about doing this, what do you think about it? I mean, the better thing might be to refer them to someone else, but no. You could probably have, simply in your capacity as a member of the council, speak to them as a member of the citizenry.
All right, any further discussion?
Thank you, Ms. Weaver.
Thank you.
All right, hearing done, let's move on to our discussion, item number three under new business, discussion North Street property.
Motion to discuss?
No, second.
All right. I sent y'all a copy of the appraisals that we had received that was done by General Real Estate Appraisal Company last year. And I think I wanted y'all to see that. It was appraised as a commercial structure. And of course, there was some issues with it even being a commercial structure because it's really a non-conforming use that's been grandfathered in, in residential zone. So, that may have been one reason why the, well, there's several reasons, I think, why the appraisal came in low, what I thought was low. But I'm not sure what the council wanted to talk about, so, anyway. I don't remember who started this. Ms. Green, did you?
Yeah, I started it. Last year, we kind of entertained the idea of selling North Street, that's why we got the appraisal, to pay for the renovation of the basement. Is that still on our table to do or are we gonna do something else with this property, like rent it or, that's why I brought it up.
Ms. Harmon?
Can you just, do you have the number in front of you as far as what it was appraised for?
Hundred and fourteen thousand dollars.
Hundred and fourteen, all right, thank you.
Mr. Harry? Mr. Harry, Mr. Meyer?
It is, didn't you say, Mayor, that there's possibility that we could lease it to the hospital?
There was, at one point, the hospital wanted to lease it from us for doctor's clinic. And that's really the, from a commercial standpoint, that's the only use, it's probably the only use that would still be available because of being non-conforming. It was used as a doctor's clinic, set up as a doctor's clinic. The option is if we want to sell it, what I would recommend is that we go ahead and then get possibly a residential appraisal. Cause that, cause I don't know what it's gonna appraise, but it seemed like it's awful low for, on there. Ms. Green?
I agree. I think that was an extremely low appraisal given, I mean, I know it needs some work. I don't see it viable for anything but residential now. I don't believe the hospital's gonna do it and I don't, I can't see us being in the residential landlord department. So, I think it would be a smart decision, we have land banks and stuff, is to entertain the thoughts of selling it and using the money for the auditorium. And I think the auditorium, putting our meeting rooms down there, being able to use it as for conferences, would be a new excellent use of this building and something we need to explore.
Well, if it's okay with the council, I can go ahead and see about getting another appraisal on the residential use and we'll see what the cost is, because I don't know what it's gonna be.
Do you need a motion?
Beg pardon?
Do you need a motion, did you?
Yeah, that would help.
Okay, I make a motion that we reappraise that property on North Street.
As residential.
As residential.
How's circumfer?
Okay, any discussion? Ms. McClung?
Not that I know much about anything, but a, a, another real estate appraisal, I don't think will do any good. I don't, I don't think typically properties are praised more for commercials than they do residential. I'm not sure what the process is for the property, but I think now that we have an appraisal, if we wanna sell it, we can put it out for bid and we can accept or reject any of those bids. Is that not correct?
That's true. I mean, we have to have a bidding process, either auction or bids on it.
I think if that's what we wanna do, to sell it, let the market dictate what it is. We've done our due diligence by having an appraisal. I don't think there's any reason to go out and spend more money on an appraisal. And, and, you know, if, whatever the dollar mark comes in that, it has to be approved at this table and, you know, the highest bid, and if, we'll either accept it or we'll reject it because that's how we feel about it. So, I don't want to spend any more money on it, so.
Ms. Green?
No disrespect, Mr. McClung, because you are a realtor, but with working with banks, if we want a hundred and, I think it's worth somewhere around 140 to 150, given the current market, if we want that and we have this hundred and fourteen thousand dollar appraisal, the banks aren't gonna give a loan. They're only gonna give a loan for a hundred and fourteen. I would like to take the chance of spending some money and getting another appraisal for residential and see, you know, if it comes in at higher.
Ms. Schneider?
City attorney, would it be legal to ask Terry to volunteer to look at it and give us a general idea? us a general idea of what he thought it would be? Would that be illegal?
Not an appraiser.
No, but you and your whole family do all that stuff.
What about appraisers?
Okay. So you couldn't, you couldn't look at it and just give your, your best idea of what you think it would go for?
I don't even know you.
Anyway, what was Tim, I wanted to man, Tim's answer.
I said, be best not to.
Okay, thank you.
Other than the cost of a residential appraisal, which is $500?
I don't know.
What's the downside to getting one?
Well, it, it, in regards to the statement that, because it's appraised for a hundred and fourteen, that's all the banks can loan up, and a purchaser, if they don't have cash and they're going to a lender, they have to get their own appraisal. They, they can't use ours. They have to have their own. So, you know, let that reflect in itself, whatever it's going to be. So, you know, there's no sense in, why, why spend the money?
Because our mayor recommended it.
Ms. Snyder?
I don't agree.
Just a real quick question. If we were to sell it at auction, it wouldn't be reflective of, well, it still would be reflective of appraisal, right, if they finance to the bank? No, we could sell it for whatever we got out of it, right?
We, we can reject, we can accept or reject.
Right. So in reality, even if we do have an appraisal on the books that says a hundred and fourteen, and somebody wanted to, at auction, purchase it for a hundred and fifty, there would be no issues, there would be no, well, it appraised at a hundred and fourteen, so therefore, you really can't sell it at auction. I mean, we bypass that entirely, correct?
True.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and take back my motion.
I'll take back the second.
Okay.
Okay.
What was the motion?
My motion was to get it.
Which to get an appraisal. I will say, we just don't know what it's worth on, on the other value. So that's my only concern. But, Mr. Thomas?
So then my question to you, would the attorney recommending we get a residential appraisal?
I'm still recommending getting a residential appraisal.
Then I will make a motion that we get a residential appraisal.
And I'll second that.
And I'll say that, because I don't know, I don't know if it's worth more or less. And to give you the best recommendation on what to do with this property, I think we should need to have that information. So, Mr. McClung?
Let me suggest this, that maybe, maybe does the appraiser that you use also do residential appraisals?
It would be another person in their firm. This was strictly for commercial.
Well, then, then let them refresh their appraisal as a residential basis, and you should get a better price. You should.
Because all the work's been done. I'll, I'll go back to this thing. I'll go back to this same company and ask for a residential appraisal. Mr. Thomas?
Then I would amend my motion to ask you to get a residential appraisal from the same company that did the commercial appraisal.
I'll second that.
Okay. Ms. Green, did you have a comment?
Well, I just had a comment. I don't want to put it up for auction, because that can be disastrous.
Or you can sell it.
It's got to, it's got to be by bid.
We can't put it with the.
Well, we can, we can, we can do auction, or we can do sealed bids.
But we can't put it with a realty company?
No.
Okay. All right.
Or not.
It's law.
Okay. That works.
I didn't know that. Okay, I'm fine.
Ms. Weaver? I would suggest, Bob, amend his motion. If, if you restrict it, the mayor to go only back to that company, you're replacing that company with the knowledge that they could basically charge whatever they want. And you're instructing the mayor.
That was a nice idea, wasn't it?
You're instructing the mayor to purchase it.
Okay. So we're just going to say, hey, mayor, go do it.
Oh, that's ridiculous.
I, I'll take it.
Take it all back.
Or send it back.
My motion is for the mayor to get the best-priced residential appraisal that he can get.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those?
Justice, and I suppose if you go ahead with that, but there was a possibility that the hospital owners bought all those lots, they bought that building, they still were talking about adding on, bringing two more doctors in. Is that wrong?
Well, they bought the other property for entirely different reasons. And the doctors was from the hospital, not the commission.
I see.
Ms. McLeod?
And I don't, like I say, I don't know about any of it, but, but they had a hundred and forty thousand dollar appraisal for that building and those lots that they bought, in, in my own opinion, wasn't worth anything. So that's, so who's right and who's wrong?
You are.
I'm both. I'm right and I'm wrong. You're right.
All right. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor of getting an appraisal by the best reasonable price? I think by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Four, two. All right. That brings us to item four, which is ordinance to waive bidding for the SCBA's for the fire department.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
This is the, I'm not sure, fourth set of SCBA equipment that the fire department has. This is in the capital budgets that we've approved by the fire department. This is a waiving the requirements, because the previous breathing, self-contained breathing apparatuses were bought from Scott, by the company of Scott. And to be able to maintain the same type of equipment, maintenance, and everything else, they have to use, and it's best to use the same company. So that's the reason for this ordinance for waiving the requirements. Ms. McClung?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the assignment's ordinance number, and read it for its first reading.
Second.
Okay. Motion, and it's, Ms. McClun, and.
Mickey.
Mickey. Ms. Snyder seconded. Discussion? I think, all those in favor, sing five, be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
The ordinance number will be 2277, an ordinance waiving the requirements of competitive bidding for the purpose of purchasing self-contained breathing apparatus. Whereas the city of Eureka Springs Fire Department is desiring to purchase 10 Scott self-contained breathing apparatus and related accessories for a cost not to exceed $76,606.25, including tax and freight. And, whereas the fire chief has investigated the manufacturers of the required air packs and compressor to determine the one best desirable for the city's needs. And, whereas equipment compatibility, safety, and cost efficiency require the continued use of proprietary equipment manufactured by Scott Health and Safety from the dealer Emergency Vehicle Specialists, EBS, of Conway, Arkansas. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section one, that pursuant to the provisions of section 3.04.02 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code, the council of said city finds that this being an exceptional situation in which the procedure for competitive bidding is deemed not feasible or practical, competitive bidding is hereby specifically waived, and the city fire department is authorized to purchase up to 10 units of self-contained breathing apparatus manufactured by Scott Health and Safety from EBS at a cost of not more than $76,606.25, including tax and freight. Purchase shall be completed no later than April 5th, 2019. Section two, that all ordinances or resolutions, parts thereof, in conflict herewith or hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section three, that each of the provisions of this ordinance are severable, and the decision of any court having jurisdiction as to the validity of any provision shall not affect the remaining provisions.
I can get a motion to approve. Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I move that we approve ordinance 2277 on its first reading.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Thomas, and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, sing five, be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Ms. McClun?
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2277 on its second reading by title.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. What is our timeframe?
We have to finalize the purchase by no later than April the 5th.
5th, so we can.
We can.
Does that, does our 30 days have to be included in that?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Weaver?
Because you've got a word clause on it, so, okay, that's all I need to know.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. McClun?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
6-0. Ordinance number 2277, an ordinance waiving the requirements of competitive bidding for the purpose of purchasing self-contained breathing apparatus.
Ms. McClun?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve ordinance number 2277 on its second reading.
Second.
All those in favor, sing five, be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. McClun?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we read ordinance number 2277 on its third reading by title.
Second.
Discussion?
Suspend.
Suspend the rules and read it on.
And then the rules are read by title.
Right.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. McClun?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
6-0. Ordinance number 2277, and ordinance waiving the requirements of competitive bidding for the purpose of purchasing self-contained breathing apparatus.
Ms. McClun?
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve ordinance number 2277 on its third reading.
Second.
Motion approved. Discussion?
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. McClun?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
6-0.
Because we need the emergency clause now, and so the timeline.
Yeah.
I'd like a motion that we go ahead and read the emergency clause for ordinance number 2277.
Second.
Okay. Motion second, to read the emergency clause. Any discussion?
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Ms. McClun?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Emergency clause, section four, that due to the need to finalize the purchase no later than April 5th, 2019, and for the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of the city, an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage by the Eureka Springs City Council, and signing by the Eureka Springs Mayor.
All right. Thank you all. That brings us up to our agenda setting. Ms. Green?
I would like to add a discussion of the last two lead and copper reports that we've gotten. They're to the public interest.
I'll second that.
Would you like our public works director to be here?
Sure.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, but I forgot.
Ms. Harmon?
On all of the items that we postponed this time, did we set a date as to when we are?
They'll be coming back the next time.
And all on the next?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any further thing? All right. City council comments? Mr. Thomas?
I would just like to say that when a council person makes a statement, and another council person misinterprets it and takes offense at it, I certainly see, think that the first person should be allowed to clarify what he said, just to avoid misunderstandings and hurt feelings. And I hope that in the future, it'll be just done easily without a lot of arguing.
Ms. Green?
Just glad to be alive in here, and glad for strength.
Ms. Snyder?
I agree with what he said.
Ms. Harmon?
Nope.
Mr. Meyer?
Can we take a look at the house on North Street?
We did. You didn't.
Uh, yeah, we, we, yeah, we've got a key. We'll get, get you in there.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
Ms. McClun?
Uh, no.
All right. Brings us to the mayor's comments. Uh, Mr. Thomas, I apologize. Uh, I thought we were getting into a debate, and I apologize. I didn't realize that you were trying to make a, a positive statement, or I wouldn't have interrupted you. I apologize, sir.
I appreciate that.
Um, as far as mayor's comments go, we got St. Patty's Day Parade on March 16th, starting at 2:00. Beginning, of course, around by the library in Hill, in Howell Avenue. We also have Rotary Interact students and Clear Springs parents group will be in Basin Park. So be sure to stop by and support these student groups during the parade. And then on the 23rd, we'll have the 38th Annual Victorian Classic at 8:00 a.m., starting at the end of the Ozarks. And also on the 23rd, out at Turpentine Creek, from 10:00 to 4:00, we'll have the kite festival. And I'm sure, as you know, it's going to be plenty windy, so there'll be a lot of kites out there. And if you've never been, it's a good time to have a lot of nice kites, and that's always fun. And then that evening is the Diamond and Denim Ball, which is a good benefit for Good Shepherds from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 at the end of the Ozarks. That's all I have. Pushing to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.